2.01, approval of the agenda. This is an action item. Mr. Munoz, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there's one change. Item 7.03, resolution disciplining an employee has been added, and we have renumbered the rest of those items under Section 7.
Move through.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Excuse me, ma'am chair. I wonder if we could have Kurt, will you turn down a little bit? There's a ring. Here's some of his little feedback here.
Can we turn the volume down just a little bit?
Yeah. It's bugging me.
Thank you.
Hey.
2.02, reorganization of the school board. This is an action item. At this time, I will take nominations from the board for chair. Mr. Smith?
I'm Jean Marvin.
Sorry.
You don't have to say it, but that's nice of you.
Thank you.
Are there any other nominations for chair? Going, 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 gone. Okay, so by acclamation, Jean Marvin will be board chair for 2018.
Thank you. I'd rather have us vote, but we don't get to do that. I'm kidding. Well, you have to vote.
Don't you? No, we don't.
That's right.
We don't. There wouldn't be any point. Okay. Okay, we've got the chair done. So now I will take nominations from the board for vice chair. I'd like to nominate Deborah Seelinger. Any others?
I nominate Don Barlow.
Any others? Okay, all those in favor of Ms. Seelinger, please say aye or raise your hand. Aye. All those in favor, Mr. Barlow, please say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries for Mr. Barlow. Congratulations. Now I will take nominations from the board for clerk.
Aye, nominee Mark Schlusner.
Any other nominations for board clerk? Hearing none. Congratulations. Good luck learning to operate the recorder, but... And as long as Wendy keeps up with all the awesome work she does, then it's a pretty good job to have. Okay, I will now take nominations from the board for treasurer. Ms. Marvin?
I nominate Julie Workman.
Any other nominations for treasurer? Hearing none? Ms. Workman is treasurer. That's always awkward. So this is an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Jean Marvin as its chair for a term of one year effective at the end of the meeting on January 2nd, 2018. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Don Barlow as its vice chair for a term of one year effective at the end of the meeting on January 2nd, 2018. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Mark Schlusner as its clerk for a term of one year effective at the end of the meeting on January 2nd, 2018. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Julie Workman as its treasurer for a term of one year effective at the end of the meeting on January 2nd, 2018.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, and congratulations to our new officers. Announcements and communications.
Code of Ethics.
What?
Code of Ethics.
Oh, is that on here?
Yeah.
Oh, no. It's not on here.
I apologize.
Not my fault. Code of Ethics, policy review 209. It's Code of Ethics. Any discussion? Ms. Seelinger.
Thank you. Just to point out to those watching and here in the audience, this is a school board policy. Our policy 209 is our ethics policy, and by law, we do review it every year. It has good information. I encourage you to look through it. Just to know that we do not take this job lightly. We take it very seriously and adhere to many of, well, we adhere to all of this long list of things, our obligations and responsibilities as board members, and encouraging anyone who is considering running for school board this year that they look over this policy before they throw their hat in the ring.
Any other comments or discussion? Any points that anybody would like to specifically review or revise or remove? Hearing none?
Just under Section 2E, I believe it's number eight, just a reminder that we have created a complaint form for board members. If you do receive a complaint, a form for you to fill out and submit that to the superintendent, and then we will look and do it and address it. So just a reminder that we do have that form out there for your use.
3.01, 2017-28, School Board Committee Assignments Update. Does anyone have an update? Ms. Marvin?
Mr. Barlow and I were able to meet with a couple of groups of parents in December as part of the Community Focus Committee, Community Engagement Committee group, and it was a wonderful experience. We met with Native American parents for a couple of hours, and we learned a lot from them. Among their concerns are that every student in Rochester, every student nationwide for that matter, gets an accurate history of the Native population in this country. And they were very quick to point out, too, that there is not just one Native culture here, that tribes are different, the language is different, the customs are different across the country. They also pointed out something that I think we tend to forget is that very often, Native people learn in a relational way. We tend to encourage kids to be really independent, and very often, the Indigenous people really foster that interdependence, that idea of working together, which I think is important. We met with about 50, I think probably Somali parents, December 17th, who gave us some great information about communication and what their communication needs are. And we took notes. We report that to the superintendent, and I think it's going to be really useful as we look at our communication audit and go forward with our planning for the district.
I would further add that it is important for community engagement to occur in a responsive manner, and I believe that the board is doing that. I'm thankful to be one of three board members that comprises the Community Engagement Committee, and look forward to ongoing outreach to the community and would even, for those who may be viewing from home, encourage you to reach out to us and to invite us in to meet with you and to, you know, hear from you. That was probably one of the more substantive things that occurred, more of a listening as opposed to a telling, and I think that was received and valued on both ends.
Any... Mrs. Becker?
Thank you. So what sort of policy issues do you see coming from the meetings that you guys had?
You know, from a policy perspective, I'm not sure at this point, but when we're talking about communication and with the communication audit we have, and when we're looking at the graduate profile in particular, you know, what do we want our graduates to know and be able to do when they're finished at school? We got a lot of good information. The Native American parents, for instance, reinforced what we heard from others is that they really want their kids to have the kind of life skills they're going to need to be able to get jobs, to go on to school, that that was really important. Finance came across as one that they were very concerned about. And then just the way that we teach kids, even that we test kids, again, the Native parents were talking about, you know, the focus that we tend to have on independence versus working together. And as we continue to look at more project-based learning, I see this is a way that we can really help kids get that hands-on experience and be able to work in groups, too. So I think in terms of how we teach kids and how it informs communication and the graduate profile, we got a lot of good information.
And then what I, specific to a policy, was from the Somali group, and the policy governing harassment, so it may relate to religion and the pulling of hijabs, and whether or not that feud asks for harassment or just child's play. And then beyond that, perhaps practices more than policy, how students can qualify to be placed in highly gifted courses, but there may not be space available for them. And then also, how to get out of EL classes. Some of the parents were unaware that they perhaps had to sign a form initially to have their students' children placed in them, and they are ready for their children to get out of them. And so what we're couching in the broad sense as communication, may not necessarily be a practice, but a policy rather, but really just an opportunity to communicate more effectively.
Okay. Any other committee reports or questions? Consent agenda, this is an action item. Are there any items that board members would like removed for separate consideration?
Approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, I just would like to call your attention to, we have three retirements in the consent. The first one is Jerry Brown, male high school paraprofessional, worked for the district for 20 years. Gordy Carroll, which works in the support department, actually works here at the Edison Building. He has worked for the district for 17 years. And then Gordy Zibart, the principal at the ALC, has worked for the district for 15 years. So these three individuals will be retiring. And then our thoughts and prayers go out to the family of Sandra Naylor, who passed away on December 15th. She was a paraprofessional at Elton Hills, and she'd worked for the district for 27 years.
Efficient and Effective Operations. 7.01, Approval of Refuge and Recycling Services. This is an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 accepts the proposal from advanced disposal in the annual amount of $290,415 for a three-year contract totaling $871,245 plus extra service pickup costs. Move approval. Okay, discussion. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, at this time, the board did ask for some more information on what it would cost to continue to just provide services to the county, so I think Scott and Andrew are going to present that information to you at this time.
Good evening, board members. From your, our meeting that we had in December, you had asked for some, yeah, we had asked for some information regarding potential of potentially keeping the services that we provide for home state county. And so Andrew drew up a kind of a spreadsheet to provide you that information. I'll let him go over it. There are some nuances on there that you need to pay attention to because he is making some assumptions here. Some of the things we're just not quite locked in on as far as some of the costs, but Andrew, if you want to go ahead, I can move it down if you wish, too.
A lot of these costs are estimates because we have never provided that service alone, so we just have to guesstimate based on our current services and reducing those number of hours and repair costs and fuel costs that would be associated with providing service to only our county pickups, essentially taking away about three-quarters of our current route and just doing about 25% of what we currently are doing. So we reduce that down to about a .3 FTE for salary and benefits, one of the bigger costs. Providing services to the county only, we would still need to look at purchasing a new truck as ours are nearing the end of their life and in need of major repairs pretty routinely. And then we went on to estimate it, some fuel costs, repairs, insurance on that truck. We'd still need to replace a number of dumpsters for the county sites as their, as their equipment wears out, and maintain our license fees. That brought us to about $30,000 with the operating costs a year, and we would still have their tipping fees of their refuse at about $47,000 a year. Going by our current volume, estimating that they have, they produce about 6,000 yards of refuse a year, and that would bring us to a cost of about $13 a yard to dispose of, to haul and dispose of their refuse. We are currently charging them $11.95 a yard. So if we were wanting to make a profit off from hauling them, hauling their refuse, just throwing a number in there at 20% overhead, we would have to charge them $15.64 a yard. So that's up from the $11.95 a yard that we are currently charging them.
Questions on that?
Mrs. Becker?
So we would need, because if I remember our discussion last time, there was someone who was retiring, and then
Yes.
the driver would move into that position. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
So nobody was, nobody was losing a job, but we weren't going to have to hire anybody else, correct?
Correct. The retirement would take care of the position getting displaced.
Right, so we're, so we're back to hiring another person? A .3?
We would have to figure out how we are going to staff that.
Okay.
Either we would have to keep on the full 1.0 and use the .7 in other areas, or absorb the .3, reducing services and other things that we're currently doing.
Okay, and then there still is the cost associated with the retirement costs of the employee who retired, correct?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, the employee, so if we just completely divest ourselves of doing any of the, any of the refuse hauling, we're not going to have to deal with this .3, but we still are actually having to deal with the person who retired and what his, his or her, I'm not sure, but their retirement costs, which are...
Yeah, any personnel costs, yeah.
Right.
We do currently have about 1.2 FTE now that take care of refuse and recycling, so we'd have about only, we'd only have to make up about .1 FTE, reducing other, taking that person from other tasks that they would be doing.
I appreciate you going, going through this and doing this analysis, but I, to my fellow board members, I strongly disagree with us continuing to haul the garbage. I think we're at a point where we can gracefully move on. Administration had said it would be nice to get rid of it. Andrew and Scott had said it would be, it would be a headache that it would be okay not to have anymore. We would have that $173,000 that is now needing to purchase another vehicle. We would have that to do something else with that's hopefully closer to the classroom. I, I just, I, I don't see us as a school district in the business of hauling refuse. I, I just, I think it's a bad, a bad direction for us to start down.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you for your presentation, and I did read through the information, and it was very insightful. I missed the last presentation, and yet concur with Director Becker. You know, we're in the business of education, not refuse hauling, and I'm fully supportive of, I believe it would be option B, where one of the private contractors take that on, and appreciate the effort that you guys have put forth and the patience as well as we have struggled to appreciate this business.
Ms. Marvin?
Yeah, I would have to agree. I think the question that we had was that the, the cost of having the district haul its own garbage versus contracting out was very similar, and I think the question was whether if we continued to haul city and or county garbage, if that was going to make it, make a huge difference in terms of revenue. But it sounds to me like there are a number of unknowns if we do that. And, you know, I agree with Mrs. Becker, if our, if our goal is education, and this really doesn't affect classroom, doesn't affect the kids in the class, I think it would be an easy thing to just walk away from and let somebody else do it.
Ms. Edgar was very kind to humor me by putting all this information into board docs, so if your long-range vision isn't as good as mine, then, or isn't as bad as mine, then you have another way of looking at it.
Refresh your screen.
Yes, refresh your screen and listen. Mr. Schlusner?
While I agree with what everybody's saying, I do think we do keep in mind at the end of the day, we're, while our job here is to educate children, it's also to run our operation as efficiently as possible. If you look at the size of the district, we're one of the largest employers in the county. So from my point, if we're hauling refuse or not, to me, it's a point as much as it is, are we being as efficient as possible with the money that we have. In this case, since it's a wash, and then from my point, if it's a wash, what I do want to remind everybody, yes, it might not be what we do, but we need to be frugal with the dollars that we have. And if it meant that we needed to haul garbage, quite frankly, I'd be more supportive of it. Again, since it's a wash.
Ms. Seelinger?
Thank you. I, I echo Mr. Schl, Director Schlusner, that I think that even though this isn't necessarily having direct impact on our students, it is part of our charge to be financially, fiscally responsible, let's say that. And I think my, my biggest concern is control, is having control over those trucks, our employees, those routes, and how those impact our school buildings. And so for me, that has been sort of a, the piece that I've had to really consider carefully for making my decision. And so, you know, there is the financial piece, but there's those sort of intangible things as well. And because this is a three-year contract, we, you know, we have, we have no control over some of those costs where perhaps we would if it was in-house. But I appreciate hearing my colleagues' perspectives and opinions as well. I would like to go back to the money that has been set aside for the truck. If we go forward with an outside contract, we don't know where that money is going. It is one-time money. It is $170,000. Will it stay in operations? Will it go to the classroom? I don't know if those are decisions that have been made. But for me, that isn't the be-all, end-all of making this decision because, yes, that could impact some of our, our classroom. I, I have a feeling it won't. I have a feeling it would probably stay in operating capital and those sorts of things. And once it's gone, it's gone. So unless we're, unless we're continuing to put money aside for something else that we may decide not to do in the future, to me, that money is, it's there and then it's gone.
I'd like to have a little clarification as I was squinting at the screen. So the potential profit line, $12,644.87 at the very bottom of the page, that includes every, all of the costs and everything else that are listed above it. Is that correct?
Correct. If we were to charge the county 20% over what we are, 20% profit and overhead margin.
Okay, so I'd just kind of like to point out that last time, we had a very big discussion about how $4,000 a year indifference between the cost of hauling our own versus not hauling our own would really provide a lot of money. I think it works out to about 22 cents per student, over 18,000 students, but here, I'm seeing the potential profit as $12,644. Is that an ongoing profit, or is that just for one year?
That would be ongoing.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
At those increased rates. From what I, the county has also, as we've been talking about outsourcing refuse, they have had to do the same thing in case we decide to outsource, just so that they're ready to move forward with having someone pick up their refuse. And they have talked, and talking with them, they have said that any rate increases, that they would not be interested in staying with us. So they're, they're good with our current $11.95 per yard rate, which we can charge when we're spreading the overhead out over a much larger area, but raising their rates to $15.64, from what I've heard from county directors, is that they're not interested in that.
Mrs. Becker?
So isn't that $12,000 and some odd cents would be a smaller number?
It's, yeah, it would be kind of a moot point. With just hauling refuse, or county refuse, to break even, we would have to charge $13.04.
And they're not interested in that? So they would say no anyway?
From what I've been told, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just a reminder, I think I said this at our last meeting, my recommendation would be to completely get out of the business, our business and county's business, and go with the bid that we have in the resolution. And then we would look to sell our two trucks and try to sell our dispensers and, or whatever, dumpsters?
Dumpsters.
Dumpster, sorry, and move forward. And I guess I, I guess I would suggest that we would, the funding that's in there, we would just leave in there. I mean, we have other vehicles that require repairs and stuff, and we've been using that to repair the trucks anyway, so we, makes sense just to leave it in that department and use it to repair other vehicles or equipment that we need. other vehicles or equipment that we need to get or purchase other equipment that needs to be purchased. Which if you remember, probably about a month ago, Andrew shared, I think it was a 20-year
20-year.
plan on how to replace all of our different pieces of equipment that we have in the system.
Any others? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. 7.02, approval of proposals for Mayo High School roof. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Facilities, will brief us on this item.
Good evening again, board members. This is regarding the acceptance of a proposal for the Mayo Roof Project. If you would, testing your memory here, but back in actually 2015, this was part of our 10-year plan to do the Mayo Roof. It was delayed at that time due to securing architectural design to 2016. We bid it out in 2016, February of 2016, and we actually divided the project into three sections, A, B, and C. And we bid it out for those three sections and also to do D, which encompassed all three of A, B, and C. Because we, we didn't really have an idea of how much it was going to cost. On March 8th, you approved the bids for section A and B of that original project. And those were completed in the summer of 16. You rejected Area C at that time due to the high cost as it came in. I think the low bid at that time was about $1.4 million. We took that because our intent was, because of the high cost, would be to roll it into a bond proposal that, in anticipation of a coming indoor air quality project. And that would have been the Lincoln K-8 project. And then Burr Oak, Mighty Oaks came on board as well. And we lumped those two together, and then we added the Mayo Roof Project. And we did one, one bond for those three projects. The Mayo Roof, Area C, Mighty Oaks, and the Lincoln K-8 District Light Option Indoor Air Quality Project. You approved all that. That bond was about 13, a little over $13 million. And the Mayo project piece of that was $1.425,479 million. We released the proposal for Area C. We had to, we had to update the design. So that took a little while, and that's why it's protracted out again a little bit. But we're ready to go on it now. So we released requested proposals on the 14th of November of 2017. And we, because it was over a million dollars, we released it as a best value project because we want, we had been satisfied with how the best value has been going and what we're getting for it. So we went with it as a best value project. We received four bids back, or four proposals back from the contractors on December 5th. On December, that same day, facility staff rated each of the four proposals on risk assessment, value enhancements, and expertise. And that was in a blind rating, similar to the past best value projects. On December 6th, we interviewed all four contractors. And that was a rated interview as well. And in the end, Merritt Roofing scored the highest overall. And their proposal was for $1,154,541 to do the Area C Mayo Roof Project.
Is this something you'd like to get started on soon? Or can it wait till the next meeting?
They're not going to do it right now.
Right. So it can wait if you wish.
Any questions, board members?
Okay.
Yes.
When would this work be scheduled to be done?
Starting as soon as school's out in June.
Thank you. Mrs. Becker.
This is just a small thing, but in RFP, and I realize that the RFP is out and come back and all, but the, I'm assuming that the, the construction date is 2018 and not 2017?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you for catching that.
Any other comments or questions? Discussion? Great. Thank you, Mr. Sheridan.
Okay, thank you.
7.03, resolution disciplining an employee. Now be it, now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 535 Rochester Public Schools as follows. One, the school board hereby approves the letter setting forth a discipline and the basis or cause for the discipline. Two, the school board chair is directed to sign the letter on behalf of the school board. Three, the district superintendent or his designee is directed to serve the approved letter on the employee and to place a copy of the letter in the employee's personnel file. Four, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13.43 subdivision 2, the specific reasons for the proposed discipline, the nature of the proposed discipline, and the letter are private data on the employee until final disposition of the proposed disciplinary action. The motion for the adoption of this, oh, can't read that. And this is a roll call. Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker.
Aye.
Ms. Marvin.
Aye.
Mr. Schlesner.
Aye.
Ms. Seelinger.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Chair Workman.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The, the next items on the agenda involve closed sessions pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 13D of the Minnesota statutes. For efficiency, the board will not reconvene in open session in between the individual closed sessions. The board will go into three separate closed sessions for the following purposes. The board will conduct a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D .05 subdivision 3B to receive confidential legal advice from the school board's attorney regarding strategy and options related to a threatened legal action involving the school district. This closed session will take place immediately following this motion in the superintendent's conference room in this building. Immediately following, the board will remain in the superintendent's conference room and conduct a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statutes Section 13D .03 subdivision 1B to consider strategy for a discussion related to strategy and developments in labor negotiations. And immediately following, the board will remain in the superintendent's conference room and conduct a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statutes Section 13D .05 subdivision 2A3 for consideration of educational data related to a proposed student expulsion. I hereby move the board to conduct these three closed sessions for the reasons I stated based on the statutory authority I previously cited.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are going into closed session at 6:14 PM. We are reconvening at 8:35 PM. 7.07, expulsion of student D17 who violated school board policy 417 chemical use and abuse policy 506, student discipline policy 516 student medication. This is an action item. Be it resolved as follows. One, the school board hereby accepts and adopts the facts and conclusions outlined in the notice of proposed expulsion as the basis for its decision. Two, the school board hereby expels the student from the schools of Independent School District 535 Rochester from January 2nd, 2018 through January 3rd, 2019. The superintendent or designee is directed to mail the following to the student and to the student's parent. A copy of this resolution and a letter stating that the student has been expelled from January 2nd, 2018 through January 3rd, 2019, and may apply to resume attending school in the district the first day, the first school day after the period of expulsion ends. Four, the superintendent or designee is directed to identify the alternative educational services or special education and related services that are available to the student during the period of expulsion if the student wishes to take advantage of them. Five, the superintendent or designee is directed to make an electronic report of this expulsion to the commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Education within 30 calendar days as required under Minnesota Statute Section 121A .53. Be it further resolved that the student is not allowed on any Rochester Public Schools property except for the building to which the school, student is assigned, nor is the student allowed to participate in any extracurricular school activities during the period of this expulsion.
So moved.
All, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Fair. I move to amend the agenda to add the following item. Approval of 2017-2019 Rochester Principals Association collective bargaining agreement.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It has now been added to the agenda 7.8, 7.08, approval of 2017-2019 Rochester Principals Association, RPA, collective bargaining agreement. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby ratify the 2017-2019 collective bargaining agreement between the Rochester Public Schools and the Rochester Principals Association, RPA, employees. Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I know they're not here in the audience to hear this, but hopefully they'll maybe watch a replay. We would, on behalf of the district, would like to thank them for their collaboration in this process. It was a smooth process, and we appreciate their collaborative spirit and that we're able to get this resolved rather quickly.
More appreciate that as well.
Yes. This meeting is adjourned at 8:39 PM.